All right, good evening. The time being 7:00 PM on September 12th, 2022. A Coram of the Planning Board being present. Call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda, well, actually, we'll let you know a couple of things first, some housekeeping. Mr. Fowler is absent this evening, so we have four members. There are two hearings on our agenda this evening. There are Agenda Item F and G. That's 1879 Main Street and 30 Commerce Way. The 1879, they're requesting to be withdrawn, and 30 Commerce Way is requesting that we be continued, they be continued to 926 meeting. So if anyone's here for those two, you don't need to hang around because nothing's going to be done on one, and the other one's going to be continued. So otherwise, we'll move on to Agenda Item A. Approval of minutes for August 22. We don't have those minutes, right?
No, Mr. Chairman, those did not come through.
All right, so we'll skip over minutes. Moving on to Agenda Item B, B1, Committee Reports. Any of the members have any committee reports they wish to make at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a comment. We are discussing tomorrow night at our CPC meeting the possible approval of additional funds and funding for the skate park project down at the San Disreguration Center. We approved $157,000 at town meeting. Unfortunately, we need another $25,000 to get the job done. Expenses have gone up and so forth and so on, so that'll be discussed tomorrow night at our CPC meeting, and I see no problem that we won't get that underway tomorrow night. So with that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any of the other members?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we had an informal get-together with the new director of NEMCOG, the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, Jennifer Raitt, and it was a very productive meeting. It was just basically kind of a meet-and-greet, a little bit, with a couple of members from the town. And we'll be meeting on our regular NEMCOG meeting last night, and I should have a little bit more of a comprehensive report following that meeting.
Excellent, very good, thank you. All right, other than that, looks like we're all set, so we'll move on to Agenda Item B2, Town Planner's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick things tonight. Want to go back a couple of months. At our January 31st meeting, I mentioned that the Planning Board has $158,839 in its sidewalk fund, where it had collected fee in lieu of constructing sidewalks for certain projects where the Board deemed that it didn't make sense or it was otherwise not beneficial. And these funds have been collected with no disbursement as of late, and I think could be put to good use, especially as costs are rising for other town sidewalk projects. Previously, I had recommended allocating funds from this fund to fill the sidewalk installation gaps on Main Street with a focus on the section from Victor Drive to the Wilmington Line. Currently, we have two segments of sidewalk missing in that pipeline in front of Balance Spa and First Colonial Plaza, 1788 and 1866 Main Street respectively. The Board had asked that we go to the delegation for these funds, since it is a part of Route 38. In the most recent state budget cycle, the town received $50,000 toward the design and construction of the sidewalks for those two sections, including a signal update for Livingston and Main. And I wanted to come back to the Board and see if you folks had any specific recommendations for where you think that part of these funds, the 158K, could be allocated towards, and if there weren't any specific projects in mind, I recommend reaching out to the town engineer to see if we have any shortfalls in existing ongoing sidewalk projects. That's been done in the past, to see if we can kind of fill in any gaps, if, you know, material costs have risen since we've applied for grants and things like that for other sidewalk projects in town. Don't need an answer tonight, but just something to kind of think about. And then another note is just the projects we have in the pipeline coming up on the September 26th agenda. One item is 434 Main Street, Wamaset Lanes. They submitted an application for site plan review to expand their rear parking lot. There are still a number of outstanding issues from the original site plan special permit which will need to be addressed during these proceedings. Next item is 3, 3R, and 4, Executive Place in Andover, the Burt Road development that came to us about two years ago. They submitted an application for a site plan review to downsize and split the originally permitted warehouse with associated parking changes. The project was purchased by another buyer who has slightly different plans than originally permitted. And then 2560 Main Street, the old Woodhaven, an application was submitted for site plan review and special permit to convert the existing memory care facility to a 55-plus congregate residential facility, and those will be heard next meeting.
How do we have outstanding items from Wamaset Lanes?
They have not submitted their as-built from the 2014 site plan special permit, and there are some outstanding drainage issues that have been periodically worked on with the town engineer. And now that they're going to be kind of changing some of the drainage patterns with this additional impervious surface, I expect that those issues will need to be revisited. So we're still, the Board is still holding a bond on that project.
Are they aware of these issues?
Yes.
Are they aware that it would be really, really good if they come in here to talk to us, that they've solved these issues?
Hope so. It's going to be in my recommendations to them.
Okay, all right.
I think it's more on the rear of the building, correct?
Correct.
Rear parking?
Correct.
For the employees in the rear building, I think. And they bought that land behind the building, Steve?
Yeah, no, I don't have an issue with what they might want to do. I have an issue with the fact that from 2014 to now, we're still waiting on outstanding issues from our permit. Because this is why we end up with the list we've had read off to us of bonds sitting around and as-bills or whatever is not getting done. And this isn't, you know, this isn't a business that, you know, was hidden, closed up, or, I mean, they're ongoing. You know, prompt them to close this out so that we don't have it floating around forever.
Absolutely.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, what are the outstanding drainage issues that need to be worked on with engineering? Do you know that, any chance?
I don't have the specifics. I could, I can pull up, I mean, the town engineer will include it in his review for this new application, the outstanding comments that were left unaddressed.
Okay, thank you. Chairman, what's the amount of the bond that we're holding?
$20,000.
Because this is going to come up again later, as far as, you know, and new guy, so I don't know what's within our purview, but it sounds like if a lot of people aren't or a lot of enterprises are not really that interested in getting their bond back, there could be any number of reasons. It sounds like maybe we need to hold a larger bond. And, you know, maybe we need to have that scale with the project. I know most construction, maybe not private residential, but most public or commercial construction, the general contractor will typically hold retainage, which is then held by the owner. So maybe we need to start thinking about something more along that line of, you know, we're not going to let you finalize payment with your contractor and their subcontractor and everybody else until everything is satisfied. Put some pressure on the people that are actually doing the construction to be the better actors. I kind of feel like, and I'm not, I don't know the situation at Wamaset at all, but I kind of feel like there's, there could always be situations where, you know, I want to build a bowling alley, I don't know anything about drainage, I'm trusting the people I hired to meet the town's requirements, and if they didn't, now I'm left holding the bag, I've got to hire somebody else. So certainly might be worth looking into this a little bit more.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Mr. Duffy.
Comment on that? And that's a very good point, Jonathan, and we did have that discussion before, but I'm just curious, like, where does the bond dollar amount, where is that number generated from?
Sure, so it doesn't traditionally, you know, bond costs, like Mr. Champa noted, are generally a percentage of the contract value or something like that, but because this performance guarantee isn't for the construction itself, it's more for producing the as-built, which gives us the valuable information about where the utilities are located and things like that. I don't know the genesis of where that bond amount started. There was kind of an arbitrary $10,000 that's been carried over for quite some time. Since I started in the position, I noticed that it was, you know, woefully, it was a low amount, and it was enough that some contractors or some developers were willing to just walk away from it, $10,000, in the grand scheme of things, they may not care. So in recent months, we have been upping it to 20,000 and 30,000, commensurating with the scale of the project. And that's something, if you folks want to come up with a standard, you know, all warehouse-sized, however many square feet, are going to have this kind of bond or what have you, that's something we can certainly explore.
I don't, you know, I don't want to discourage anybody from doing, you know, working in the town or anything like that, so if we're going to look at something like that, I'd like to have an idea of sort of surrounding towns, you know, what are other folks doing? If you can find, you know, obviously, I don't want to add to your plate, but if in your travels, you hear from the surrounding towns that, you know, this is how they do it, they have less problems than we do, they have more problems than we do, you know, and then you can kind of get an idea. You know, I mean, you know, I'm all for incentivizing, but I don't want to be punitive just for the sake of, you know, doing so.
Sure.
At the town's detriment, so. All right, so that takes care of that. Moving on to Agenda Item C, 61 Briarwood Road, Family Suite Special Permit. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
It's all moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. Do we have anyone here for 61 Briarwood Road?
Yes.
You guys would come up to the table. State your names for the record, then the floor is yours.
Dave Wolva.
Brian Mulva.
61.
Floor is yours.
So we just filed everything, I'm just waiting for approval on you guys, and then it's going to go to Board of Conservation.
Okay. Do you want to add any detail to what you're doing?
Not at this particular time. You should have all the drawings and everything else, so.
I meant more along the lines of purpose, like, why?
Oh, so my wife, my wife, I've grown up here my whole life. My wife and I just have a baby, he's five months old. Been looking in the house and market, you know, I have a great job and whatnot, it's just a tough market right now, and my parents and I kind of lined up a pretty good deal that's going to work out for me, work out for them. I want to move into the big house, they're going to move into the family suite and, you know.
So I can just touch base on that real quick. So I'm getting ready to retire in a couple of years, so I have a place in Main, and I'll have a place here, and hopefully I can get the heck out of here and head to Florida for a few months. So that's my plan. It works out very well. He stays in Tuxbury where he wants to, rather than going someplace where my grandkids won't be nice growing up. He doesn't want to go up to New Hampshire or anything, so it's kind of a plan we came up with, and we think we're going to add to the neighborhood and make it look a little bit nicer down there, so.
Very good, thank you. We'll start with Mr. Duffy.
I just want to confirm that you're hooked up to SOWA right now?
Yep, we're all hooked up.
Yep, okay. It's a good-looking plan, good-looking addition, and I'd be in support of that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Duffy, but you're stealing Mr. Fratelli's time.
I was just going to say that.
I mean, the next thing we know, someone's going to be saying something about the mailboxes. They don't run luck.
That's okay, Mr. Johnson, as long as they pick up on the learning process, we're good.
All right, Mr. Fratelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Been by the house, beautiful house, beautiful neighborhood. So the total square footage for the addition is going to be?
1,000 square feet.
Exactly.
To the T.
I got you. I looked at the plans, I'm like, that's right on the money, so, good. So the plan I seen, the door is on the left side, does he have a door on the left side of the house as well?
We do, yep, past the two garage doors, there's an exit door there, an entrance door there that'll go back up into the, into the unit, so the stairs going up to the second floor.
Any chance of putting that in the back of the house?
We could put it in the back of the house, but you won't really see it anyways, because if you were to jog, it's in a little bit further, but I could. The only thing is, if I put the unit to the back of the house, then if his wife or my wife decides to use that door, it's behind the house.
Yeah.
And the woods are behind my house, so, not that we live in a crazy place, but that's kind of the reason that door is on that side.
I got you.
Basically.
Okay, yeah. Any concerns for any neighbors about what you're trying to do? Just curious.
I don't think so. My neighbors are pretty good, I've been there a long, long time, nobody's said a word to me, one of them's looking forward to seeing it, so it's all good.
You know, I'm all in favor of the family suite and exactly what you're doing, as far as bringing the family together. You know, his son got a place with you guys, and the kids are there, grandkids are there.
They have a four-bedroom house right now, we don't even use half of it. I think I've had dinner in my dining room 10 times. We don't use any of the big rooms, so we might as well kick it out and get over there, you know, less cleaning. That's what my wife says.
Absolutely, so with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set.
All right, Mr. Chairman?
Really, no comments. It's a very well-done plan. I like that they included the engineering for the LDL beams throughout, and I hope it works out for you and your family.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, the Chair is all set as well, simple. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, bring it back to the Board. What is the pleasure of the Board at this time?
I'm making a motion, Mr. Chairman, to close the public hearing.
A motion made, do I have a second?
Good.
Motion made in second, and all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. As to the Family Suite Special Permit, do we have a motion? It's all moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. Good luck.
All right, thank you. Thanks.
I'll reach out to you guys tomorrow. I'll reach out to you guys tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you guys.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item D, 51 Regina S. Drive, Family Suite Special Permit.
Hi.
Hello?
Katie McChee.
Hello, you?
Good.
The floor is yours.
Huh?
The floor is yours.
I am here representing customers, I guess, that want to put a family suite in the bottom floor of their split little house for her mother to move in.
Okay. All right, we'll start with Mr. Fratelli this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Katie, you live at 81 Celts Street, but not at the property at 51 Regina S.
Yes, my husband's the contractor.
Okay, oh, good. I see it on the application, but you didn't clarify that when you spoke, so just for the record.
I missed that one.
Just for the record, we have you on file as the contractor's.
Representative.
Aaron Raitt.
Yeah, so, good. So my only question to you is, the square footage for the basement is going to be?
Less than 800.
Less than 800, okay. You don't have an exact number for me, do you?
I can do some math.
That's okay.
Excuse me, I believe it's 732 square feet.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I asked the applicant because it becomes a member, I mean, a piece of the file, that you said it was going to be 732 square feet, so.
732.
So it's part of the record, so that's all. So my other question is, have you lived in the area or know the area that well down there?
My whole life.
Okay. So I recall the flood that happened a number of years ago, and I recall Regina S. Drive being underwater, so.
I don't know if it was underwater, you couldn't get to it, you had to do that weird access road thing, but I don't know. I'm on the other side of South, I'm by like the lake.
Yeah, so, I mean, but enough to cause problems per se for a family suite that's going to be going into a basement, so.
I'm sure they're aware of that.
Yeah, okay, just, I just want to make you aware of it, because I'm aware of it as well. It happened a number of years ago, and it was, and I felt sorry for the people down there because of the fact that the water, you know, unfortunately, the Shoshine River came up and overflowed, and the next thing you know, the whole neighborhood's compromised with water, so, I mean.
A few days off of school then, yeah.
Yeah, so, but just so you know, that question, that, you know, if you, I'm sure you're aware of it, so with that, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to echo some of Mr. Fratelli's sentiments, that water gets into houses any number of ways, so I'm assuming that if a kitchen is going in, I don't know if there's already some existing bathroom or any underslapped plumbing, but, you know, when it comes to drainage, you really can never have enough when it comes to houses in lower, lowland-type areas. The one thing that I, we don't have here is there's no map of the existing plans, so the only other word of caution that I would add is your utility room is in the corner, and I know when I bought my house, they had done something similar in the basement, and they kind of really packed in that utility room and, you know, didn't restrict, everything works, but the access is really tight, and, you know, thank goodness I do yoga, because to change that air filter is a little bit tricky. So what I would say is just as you're, unless you're completely redoing the utilities room, make sure you leave yourself proper clearances and whatnot, especially if you decide to do any additional work down the road. You know, having some room in there would definitely be beneficial as well.
Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you. Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, the only issue I have, and it's really not a Planning Board issue, it's something that you may run into as you go continue your permitting process here, it doesn't seem to be like a second egress, a second door that are out of the basement in the split there. Is there another door that you're not, that's not on the plans, or is it only the stairs going to the upstairs?
I don't know the answer to that.
All right, again, it's not a Planning Board issue anyways.
Yeah.
It's just something that you may want to be aware of, that you.
A window can count as an egress though, right?
Isn't it in the bottom right corner?
They all look like windows to me.
Does a window count?
It could be, again, that's, I probably, I'm stepping out of line a little bit there, it certainly.
Just a heads up, I appreciate that.
But it's just something that you want to.
Thank you.
You want to confirm that.
Thank you.
So that there's a second way out from.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, the Chair is all set as well. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this? You should come up to the podium, give your name and your address, and then the floor is yours.
Sorry, that one right there, yes. Hi, my name is Robert Ramos, I'm the owner at 51 Regina S. Drive. I just want to touch on two things that were brought up. With the mechanical room, I'm an HVAC technician by trade, I'm very aware of clearances and everything going on, and I don't want to have to squeeze in there to do any work as well, so that's, that was a very good, very good point. The other thing with the flood, the property is ground level, and it's under a foot, under the flood zone, and my flood zone's one, it's, I think it's 1% every 100 years, so it's, it won't be a big issue, and I pay flood insurance every year, so if there is, then it'll be taken care of. And that's all, thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right, anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, bring it back to the Board. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Motion to close the meeting, Mr. Chairman?
Motion to close the hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to the Family Suite Special Permit?
Motion to approve.
A motion made, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question before I leave. Do you have SOWA?
Do I have SOWA? I'll be a S.
Any of you guys asked that? You, Chairman.
You went first!
Well, Vinnie, they beat you to the punch, it's in the packet.
Oh, I didn't see.
Yeah, yeah. It was in the, uh, there.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item E.
I stuck a stick.
Mr. Sadwick, much of them watching us from downstairs, you just slipped in right in time. We have a zoning bylaw amendment, this is our required hearing for anything that's zoning-related prior to town, well, I guess the special town meeting in this case. So we have one article that Mr. Sadwick, I suspect, will present to us now, and then go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Evening, everyone. Jonathan, welcome to the Board.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the article is actually a four-step article. There are a number of different things located throughout the bylaw that needed to be adjusted to allow for retail marijuana sales, so, you know, the first one deletes it from the section that has all the prohibitions listed in the bylaw, so that opens it up for us to allow uses elsewhere. The second item was inserting in Section 5.7.2D, allowing it in the Interstate Overlay District. The third step would amend the marijuana section of the bylaw itself, which is Section 8.7. And then the last one would allow for the uses in the use table, and I think I've presented to the Planning Board in the past that we were looking at the South Business District, the General Business District, and the Industrial 2 District. So those are three underlying districts that would be allowed in, and I had referenced that that second item there was the Interstate Overlay District, so it's three underlying and one overlay that would be allowed for retail marijuana. The way that this is going to work, and I'm talking on the zoning, but I think I'll touch on the other component to this, is that the article prior to zoning in the warrant will be for a general bylaw, which will give the Select Board the ability to issue retail marijuana licenses, and in that, it will be capped at 20% of our off-premise liquor sales, which basically liquor store, or package stores, and it would be limited to three in town, because that's the 20%. So that would precede the zoning piece, if that piece in that, as a general bylaw, only requires a simple majority. If that fails, then this article would be withdrawn. If that passes with a simple majority, and this doesn't hit a two-thirds majority, I'm not sure where we'll be at that point.
Okay. All right, so, I guess we'll start with, start with Mr. Champa.
You said that the cap will be 20% of the liquor sales, so if additional package store licenses were granted, does this scale automatically, or would there be a second iteration of licensing review by the Select Board?
There would be an increase in the number of retail marijuana sales that would be allowed. The likelihood of that happening, it would actually, that's based on population size, and then we could go for special legislation, and we have done that in the past, but currently we're capped at what would be three retail, and in the future, the number could inflate, but it wouldn't require coming back to change it. That's why, that's why we left it as the percentage versus a hard number, because we know that it could float in the future.
And just because I know this is, this is all going to, the math of this is going to come up, so that would mean for every 15, for every five liquor stores, we could have one retail marijuana establishment? So I was just curious, do we, do you happen to know, and it's okay if you don't, I don't blame you, but how many package stores we currently have?
Nope.
And does this round up, or does this round down?
It rounds up. It rounds up to the nearest whole number, and the total number I will have for town meeting.
Okay, so if there were, if there were 11 or more package stores, that would be enough for the three establishments?
Correct.
So one way or another, we'd have to open up five more package stores, more or less, maybe, I mean, it could be like, if we were at 14, we'd only have to open up two more.
Right, and like I said.
So that's why I think that might be a point of contention at town meeting, as far as.
No, that's a fair, that's a fair point. Like I said, though, it's based on population, so we're only going to see that number move as our population grows, or if we sought special legislation, which we've only done once in the last 20 years.
Okay, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Duffy?
Yes, Mr. Sadwick, so in addition to the selectment licensing, yeah, an applicant would have to get state approval too, is that?
Correct.
And that's from...
So the state has the Cannabis Control Commission.
Right.
Which, all of the state legislation kind of points now to the CCC as being their licensing body. And I say that because in the past, there was Department of Public Health when there was just the medical marijuana. But since adult-use marijuana has been legalized, everything's been consolidated with Cannabis Control Commission. They do issue a license. It's a very extensive and exhaustive process that you have to go through to get that license. And our local license would not go into effect. You get a six-month interim period to allow for the state to issue the license. If you don't, you can get a one-month extension, and then you could potentially lose your local license. So we're issuing kind of an interim license at the Select Board until you get your permanent license from the state.
Part of the reason that I was asking about that is because I recently read that... Because it's kind of a, for some reason, it's, you know, this will be, you know, kind of a hot-button topic. But I recently read that, like, Boston, for example, has five retail marijuana outlets right now. And they have, you know, some number of them in the pipeline. And they want to open more, but the process is very restrictive, and maybe bottlenecking with the commission, I don't know. But I guess I just don't want people to think that we're going to have 20 retail marijuana stores in Tuxbury, not yet.
Correct.
You know what I mean? Based on what's out there. You know, I think it's, you know, a good idea. You know what I mean? They're here. The train is already here, so, you know, I think it's a good idea from a revenue standpoint, and I think most law enforcement, if I'm not mistaken, are, you know, somewhat on board with.
Yes, initially, there was concern and opposition, but what we've been seeing over the last three or four years is that as they have been opening these establishments, police are saying that they're some of the best establishments in their communities because they are so tightly controlled and restricted. So it's a very clean operation with very little problems of crime or anything else. You know, traffic and transportation, yes. At the start, when these things first start up, you do have that initial rush, but after it hits a normal pace, it doesn't seem to be an issue in communities. The other thing too, and I'm sorry, this would also see site plan review with the planning board, so that will be the piece that you will see just by nature of the way that our bylaw is structured now. Any non-residential comes before you, so...
Are they going to have any, you know, any DoorDash, Uber Eats-type deliveries on this stuff? Like, what's the reg on that, Steve? Just out of curiosity? If you know the answer to that.
I don't. I mean, it's... I don't know of any service that exists like that. There was concern about where you would be receiving the marijuana that you would be selling, what type of cultivator you were getting that from, and everything else, where that's being processed. As far as delivery is concerned, I'm not sure with the state regulations as far as an independent operator could do delivery like that.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So the retail marijuana delivery is going to be something separate, as far as I understand. The state's still working on the regulations for that. So it's not like any of these traditional brick-and-mortar retail marijuana establishments. They're just going to be able to start having a fleet of vans going out wherever. I believe they're still working on the specifics of that to make sure that that does not happen.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all. Mr. Chairman.
Natalia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve, we were discussing earlier the four locations are in town where the sales can go. I know one was from the Shoshine Street to the Wilmington line, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
And one was from...
On Route 38, yes.
The Route 38. And the other one was from down near the old Nissan dealership, which is now the electric car dealership, to the Lowell line.
Correct.
The other one was on East Street from somewhere around the Carter Street area to the Andover line on East, correct?
No, the Carter Street area to the train tracks. That's the Industrial 2 District.
Okay.
And then, and so then when we're talking about the Interstate Overlay District, that's the east and Shoshine intersection that kind of runs down to the tracks of Shoshine, Shoshine Street.
Oh, okay. I got you. Okay. Yeah, I was just... I knew of two or three of them, I wasn't sure of the last one, but... And it seems to me, Steve, if we're going to go this route as far as the town, we're probably going to be getting an established marijuana business that already has other licenses in other towns that's going to come. It seems like it's pretty cumbersome for a new guy to come in and have to go through all the regulations. But I mean, I'm just a guess, but...
Yeah, I... It could be either or. I mean, we don't preclude one over the other. I think if you have experience in other communities, you've been through the process, so you may know it better from a state perspective, so...
And have a track record as far as, you know, no issues or whatever, or so forth and so on.
Yeah, but again, I would say that we wouldn't preclude someone.
Sure. All set, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So, I mean, I don't want to jump there, but our... This article doesn't have anything to do with the number, though. That's in the general bylaw.
Correct.
I'm sorry, the general bylaw article. So, you know, not that... I mean, I don't... It doesn't matter to me either way. You know, we've set it to 20%. If it bothered people that much, and they wanted to put some sort of limit, you know, or hard cap, that's where they would do it, first of all.
Right.
You know, that part doesn't make that much of a difference to me. You know, I could see, you know, some concern for that, but, you know, I'm not that overly concerned because other than doing like a home rule, you know, you're only going to move on population, and we're not going to find out a change in population for a decade.
Yep.
Because we're on the number we're at now, and you're not going to find out a new one for 10 years. So should have a home rule petition. And in the event we did a home rule petition, it could include not triggering this if it wanted to.
Right, and, you know, the more that I think about the home rule petition, and we actually did that just for restaurants. We didn't do it for package stores, so...
But I mean, just because, you know, it behooves us to anticipate the litany of potential questions at town meeting so that we're, you know, ready for them ahead of time. In the event that a home rule petition were put in, it itself could have a limitation in it.
Correct.
That would not allow a trigger of the next or another store
Yep.
being authorized.
Yes.
So, you know, there are ways to also curtail that concern should it ever come up that we, for some reason, thought we needed more liquor stores. You know, they could be separated, and, you know, not... The trigger could be held off.
Right, and home rule petition is going to require town meeting vote anyway, so you'll be back to the legislative body.
And once again, just for, you know, so for everybody's understanding, the steps involved in trying to get one of these is going to require you to go in front of the Select Board, our board, and the state.
Correct.
Before you get this. So this isn't, you know, this isn't like opening up a convenience store. You know, there are several steps and places where you're going to potentially hit a speed bump if you don't have all your ducks in a row and all those things. This isn't an as-right, you know, drop off your paperwork, open tomorrow. That is not the case with this. And then also, again, because they go hand-in-hand, the main impetus for this is the benefit to town in terms of revenue, correct?
Correct.
That's the main...
Right, that's the third article. So it'll be the general bylaw to allow for the licensing authority, then the zoning bylaw change, and then the third one would be for that additional 3% sales tax. So the town would be seeing revenue on the sales tax, and then also, as part of applying to the Select Board, that host-community agreement has to be submitted in draft form. So all of that is tied to this type of use.
But ultimately, it's a revenue generator.
Yep.
You know, much like when we discussed sort of like the billboards. You know, if we don't take advantage of it, we're going to find that one of our bordering towns does, and it's not going to make much of a difference, other than the fact that they're going to be the ones making the money. If I'm not mistaken, Andover does not.
Correct.
And Wilmington does not.
Correct.
Lowell does, and to no one's surprise, Lowell put one of theirs exactly where.
Right, on our border.
Just over the border of our town. So, you know, envision the fact that that's happening somewhere else. If we aren't the ones who take advantage of it, I would be much more inclined to put it on, for example, say, the Andover border. And then, you know...
And the Wilmington border?
That's a town I actually will refer to. Usually, I only refer to Andover as the town that shall not be named. But, you know, that's... So, you know, there's reasons for it. I mean, there's revenue generating from places who may want to partake in going to, you know, to those retail establishments, but for whatever reason, you know, don't want to have it there. And that's a boon to us, because otherwise, you know, they're just going to pass through here on their way to Lowell to go spend their money. So I think it would be in the town's best interest to support all three of those articles from a revenue standpoint. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this special town meeting article? Just state your name and your address. The floor is yours.
Good evening. Ronald Schilly, 90 Cottigan Road. Mr. Sadwick, as a follow-on to the revenue part. So I think you said an additional 3% on sales tax. Does all of that go to Tuxbury, or does the state get their hand in that?
No, that all goes to the town.
That's all to the town?
Yep.
Okay, and then I guess a procedural question I have. So, I can't remember. I know we took this out of the general... Or the zoning bylaw vote that we had back in May, right? So from a procedural perspective, I think you said there's a general vote, then there's a zoning bylaw vote, and then there's the finance part of it. It sounds like they're all somewhat dependent, right? So if the first one fails, the other two go away. What if the first two pass and the third fails? Since, as Mr. Chairman pointed out, right, the revenue is a big part of this. Like, what happens in that situation?
I want to make a comment that I'm not going to make, so I'll just let Mr. Sadwick answer the question.
First, I would be shocked if that happened, but if it did, we would be losing that revenue, period. I mean, we'd be...
We'd have the establishment and lose the money.
Yeah.
Which would be something I would envision possibly happening at a town meeting, but it would be insane.
Well, I mean, you've been around long enough.
That's my point, yes, I know.
Things can happen, right? So, right. I guess maybe a more practical question is what if the first passes and the second fails?
Well, Mr. Sadwick brought that up a few minutes ago. There's a little bit of a... Unknown to that. Because at that point, the general bylaw would be approved. The zoning would be kind of fuzzy at that point.
Correct.
So...
That one becomes a lot more challenging.
There's a nuance there.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to be a pain in the butt.
No, no, I completely... This is what my point was a few moments ago, that we're better off asking these questions and trying to have the answers ready.
And that's kind of the reason why I'm here, is because, you know, with what happened with the general zoning bylaw the last, you know, whatever years, right, that we ran into a lot of this stuff, so... And my mind's been out of this. I apologize. You know, the summer, I took the summer off and haven't really been paying attention to things. But so, yeah, I'm just kind of starting to get back into it and just kind of interested from a procedural perspective what may happen.
So you asked...
He asked if the first one would have passed and the zoning would have failed. You said it's fuzzy, at which point I presume we would vote on the third.
I mean, ideally, it's all or nothing, right?
Let me tell you that now that I'm thinking through this a little bit more. If the first passes, which gives the Select Board licensing authority, but we don't zone to allow for it anyplace, then it goes nowhere.
Oh, right.
So that's...
There's no zoning for it.
So if it doesn't hit the 2/3s on that second vote, then we're done for the night, really.
Yeah.
Because buried in that zoning, buried in that zoning article, the first point of that zoning article was to lift the ban that is currently in place. Remember, I said that it's there, the all-prohibited uses? If that article doesn't pass, that prohibition stays in place, so it wouldn't be allowed anywhere.
Okay. One final one from me. I assume nothing's changed since the zoning bylaw committee dissolved as far as changes to these specific articles, correct? Are they as-is whenever you guys dissolved, you know, whatever the heck that was a couple months ago?
Right, no. So the zoning bylaw was not part of this at all?
Well, initially, the marijuana part was, right? But then didn't we take that out because we didn't want to throw that into the mix in fear of possibly losing the whole zoning bylaw?
I sat on it, so basically, it was one of the things that we were prepared to move forward with, but we did not move forward with because the feeling was it made more sense to do it all at once with the general bylaw, the zoning bylaw, and in this case, the finance piece, all at one time? Because had we put it in the zoning bylaw and it passed, it would have been sort of sitting there without the general bylaw having been done. And those pieces, you know, and we also didn't want to confuse anyone.
So the zoning part is as-is?
Well, we never really got anywhere on it. This is just drafted by, in this case, I think the town put it together in conjunction with the regular bylaw, the general bylaw, to put forward. So the zoning bylaw committee, other than strongly supporting doing so, did not draft any language and leave it sitting on the table when we dissolved. We just simply said, "Okay, we'll let it be dealt with all at once together." But we supported it doing so and made the comment that should anyone wonder why it was not in the zoning bylaw when it was amended, that was why.
Okay.
And that was sort of how we left it.
Yeah, fuzzy memory, but thank you. Okay, cool. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions, comments, or concerns on... Seeing none. Any other questions from the board members?
Just a quick comment, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
The Lost River Dispensary is in the Drakett South Village District or Business District, and just so happens to be about half a mile from my golf course. I haven't seen any traffic issues, any other of the sorts of issues that... I mean, quite frankly, you wouldn't even know what it was to look at it unless, you know, now they have a couple of billboards on 495 that you can't miss. But I would just say that outside appearances, it appears to have minimal impact one way or another to traffic or, you know, anything else. There's no hooligans hanging out on the corner or anything like that. It just blends in very well with the district. And I think that between the Select Board, the Planning Board, and the state, that we'd have, as Mr. Sadwick said, a fairly upstanding business that would generate a very nice revenue stream and with minimal negative impact or downside.
And one of the pieces, I think, in connection to that is that they're required to have security on-site. There aren't very many businesses that are required to have security on-site whenever they're open. That's kind of rare, and probably more than likely one of the reasons why. It's not a problem anywhere. Plus, to your point on the traffic, I really think that was more of an initial thing when you forgot the very first one.
Yep.
Or the second one, or the first one in an entire area. And it drew people in from everywhere on day 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, until everybody sort of got on a more normal sort of shopping schedule and not a, "The door's open today, let's go check it out." I don't, I don't, you know, I don't see it on Channel 5 anymore the way it used to, where, I mean, when opened and they were showing the lines. It just doesn't happen. Somewhat similar to Sonic down the road. For a couple of days, you know, you couldn't get in there, you needed a detail. But, you know, now they're not there anymore. So, all right, so without any other questions, comments, then to you.
No, just that you folks need to recommend adoption, that's all.
So with that, bring it back to the board. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing on the article?
So moved.
Yep. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. As to a recommendation for the zoning bylaw amendment, no number for the article, right?
No, no.
All right, so we'll just, the article as presented this evening and numbered as it is when we get to town meeting. Do we have a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to...
Recommend adoption?
Recommend adoption of the zoning bylaw amendment presented tonight by Mr. Sadwick in the town of Tuxbury.
All right. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Sadwick.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item F, 1879 Main Street. The applicant for 1879 Main Street has requested that we... That they be allowed to withdraw this application without prejudice. So do we have a motion?
Motion to accept the applicant's withdrawal. No questions?
All right, without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
All right, we have a motion made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Takes that off our agenda. Moving on to Agenda Item G, 30 Commerce Way. The applicant has requested that we continue to our 9:26 meeting, and we have them penciled in for 7:00. So do we have a motion to continue 30 Commerce Way to 7:00 PM on September 26th?
So moved.
A motion made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to old business. Do we have any old business that any of the members wish to discuss? Hearing none. Any new business any of the members wish to discuss? Hearing none. We have no correspondence this evening. That brings us to adjournment. We have no correspondence this evening, that brings us to adjournment, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion made, do we have a second? Motion made in second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, we'll see you on the 26th, good evening.